Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, June 16th, 2021 meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. Before we start, would everyone rise and join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, see. The Norfolk County Commissioners are meeting today in person in accordance with the open meeting law with a Zoom option of public participation. Contingent upon the action of the state legislature extending, state legislature extending Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Commissioners may hold meetings via Zoom in the future and plan to discuss this during the meeting under item number 16. This is brought about because the agenda was printed on Monday and had to be posted on Monday and the legislature and the governor agreed on the terms, but today the governor signed the bill extending it at 10 o'clock and we found out at noon. But we're going to discuss that under item 16. But welcome, everyone. We haven't been at a live meeting till about June, about March 10th of last year, so.
It's unbelievable.
In some ways, we're veterans, but in some ways, it's new today. I want to start at the top. And welcome our new county director, John Cronin, who came to work this week and we're excited to have John and this is his first Commissioners' meeting. I know the most excited person to see John has been Michelle Laffadini, so we're going to take her there, but welcome, John.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And thank you to Bill and Michelle for your fine work while we were waiting to hire Johnson.
Yeah, yeah.
Call the meeting to order, I'm going to call the rule, Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Shays present. With a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on June 9th, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye, that's unanimous. Number four minutes of the executive session meeting of June 9th, 2021 for approval.
Motion.
Second.
And not to release?
Not to release at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number five. Public comment. As I said at the outset, we are on Zoom, we didn't plan to be, but we're happy to be on both. But if there's anyone who's waiting to speak in the public comment section, now is the time to speak. And if there's anyone here who wants to speak.
Chairman, I haven't heard from anybody regarding the meeting this week.
Okay. Again, we're in the public comment, number five, any public comment at all? Okay, last call, any public comment? Thank you. Number six. Facility maintenance report and Corona update, John McGowan. John, we were hoping you'd be today.
Yes, Commissioners, good afternoon and congratulations, new director, Cronin.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry I'm not there, I got confused here, I thought we were having it on the Zoom. I'm sorry I'm not there, but I don't have that much to tell you anyway. The coronavirus thing is, I hope it's a thing of the past for now. We haven't had any outbreaks or anything like that, which is a good thing. On the facility spot is, as I mentioned to you at one of the other meetings, the boiler, I think it's number two boiler in the Registry of Deeds, is pretty well shot and I told you about the sections that were, they needed like about six or seven sections. And I, the more I thought about it, I had IBS, I talked to Dave and I said, these boilers were only put in like eight years ago, at 10. There's no reason in the world that they should have a life expectancy of a lot more than that. And, and he's going to get ahold, I had the guys come again today and they took the section out and it's pretty well destroyed, the whole, the whole inside of it, something malfunctioned there. It had to be a flower in the casting because no, no section should go like that, that fast. And, and the water doesn't even reach up to where it has a hole in it. So, we're gonna, he's going to bring in the Berman people and they're going to look at it under warranty. That's what I'm getting at, I'm trying to get it that we shouldn't have to pay for any repairs to it. I don't believe so anyway, but that's where, right now, they were here today, they took it apart. The warranty guy is supposed to be here tomorrow, or Friday, I'm not sure which day he's going to show up. But I'm going to make sure that, that I'm there when he's there and I want to, I want to hear what he's got to say. But other than that, you know, I got that thing in Stoughton tonight and hopefully we can resolve that. I tried to get some air, air purifiers for that building, but they, you know, they gave me the ones, they're going to give me the ones for Rentham Court. But they're holding off on Stoughton, for what reason, I don't know, I'll have to talk to the judge when I get down there. But other than that, I don't have anything else, if you have any questions, I hope I can answer them.
Commissioners, any questions to John?
Yeah, a quick one for you, John, so how long would boilers usually last, any idea?
Well, geez, the ones that were in there, the original ones were there for about 40 years. I don't, I don't believe that they should have went that soon, I don't care what, I mean, those are cast and the cast might have had a flower in it and, and they do sometimes and, and what did is it, it complicated everything, once that one hole got in it, that the water, the steam and everything else started working on the other units, on the other sections too, so I mean, it's destroyed, I mean, it's, there's no way you could possibly repair it, it's no sense in repairing it because I had them give me a price on a new one is $22,000 just for the unit. And then it's like about 20 or something thousand to put it in. So you're talking about 40, between 40 and 50,000, I think. And, you know, we're not in a position for that right now, I don't believe, I mean, I have, I, I can get the money in my department, I can move some money around and come up with it, but we have to get it running before the next heating season. And it's no better time to do it than now, you know, because you have to order the, order the boiler, who knows how long that's going to take and we want to make sure that we have it here and get it back in operation. You know, worst, coming to worst, we could run it with one boiler for a while, but I wouldn't want to do it for very long. But I'll have more information once I talk to this representative.
Okay.
John, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stady.
Yeah, John, what did you mean by you said they, they're holding up on the air purifier to Stoughton, who's holding you up?
It's a guy in town, he said that he talked to Dan O'Malley, Judge O'Malley and they, they don't seem like they need them, they said they didn't need them until they start doing jury trials.
Oh, okay.
Something like, something to that effect, I don't know, Commissioner, I'll have to ask him when I get down there.
Okay, no, that's, I thought we were going to provide them and I understand, that's no problem at all.
Yes, they were all set to be picked up and I don't know what happened, that's why I have to, I have to get down there and talk to the Chief Justice.
Just asking, thank you, thank you.
John, since we're talking about Stoughton Court, they know that, they know that you're coming, I'm not coming, Commissioner Stady is going to represent us there. And as you know, we're trying to gather everyone in one room until we can get started. I did get some good news from Nancy Monday or yesterday, that equipment has found its way to the rigging company. It came a little early, not that early, early isn't better, it is. So based on today's meeting and what this consultant says about weight, et cetera, whatever he, he's looking into, we should be able to have a meeting of the minds and get going. I, I know the clerk is going to be there, I talked to her this morning and she's just back from a couple of days off, but they're, they're ready, willing and able for anything they need, so. Nancy's going. Commissioner Stady, you're going to someone to your office?
No, I'm going.
Okay, good, and the consultant? And John?
The engineer, I got, I had him get a, get ahold of the installer, he's going to be there. And I guess Mark Toachi, he's not, he's not going to be able to make it, he's, he's got a personal issue he has to deal with. But the installer will be there, I'll be there.
Okay. Our intention is to, let's get, you know, to get going, you know that, everyone knows that.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to hear from, the powers to be in town that we're holding them up on getting back to jury trials, but as of now, we're not, but I want to, we could still do this work while they were open, I did find that out, but I think today will be a way for everyone to get in one room and decide how this is going to be handled.
Yeah, once, once that structural engineer comes up with a plan of adding to that crib that's up there now, we'll be in business, once, once he comes up, we'll give it to the installer and, and have him do it right away. And then he can do the ductwork and then all we got to do is line up the crane to come out with the truck and put it in place, there's still a lot of work to be done, don't get me wrong, but we'll be way ahead of the game once we get this pad straightened out today, we'll get it straightened out today, one way or the other. I know he's going to have to go back to his office and, you know, make up a diagram and all that, but.
He's getting there, you know.
We'll, we'll, we'll get it done, Chairman.
Last question, if we, if you're fortunate enough and you get the warranty, this work at the registry done on a warranty, does that include the, the labor?
It includes everything, it should, it's no fault of ours that this equipment failed because of manufacturer.
Okay.
I mean, to my knowledge, I'm not a lawyer, but, I mean, that's, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Try it, John, give it a shot, you never know, right?
All right, John, last call for maintenance, any other questions for John?
Thank you, John, we'll see you later on, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, appointments, we have none. Number eight, old business. We have none. No, I'm going to take two items, the Zoom and the fiscal policies up on the 16, if you don't mind. Number nine, personal matters for consideration. We have an important and then one is a notice of change of address. By way of discussion, this very first one is retirement of Heidi Black, who has been a director of sped at the, at the school for a number of years. She had gone last October, but I think she was still filling in. For several months, I've been aware that they were soliciting and looking for a new director of specialized in long behold a paperwork as it are, based on our discussion last week. What are things on the agenda? I did discuss with Tammy and Ricky Fitzpatrick because they called me two weeks ago. I'm concerned because they just offered disposition to the new person. Now, whether you want to vote today or in July, I, I, I feel that maybe we should wait and do it in July. She is probably, I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to be consistent based on the issue I had last week with a level entry position at the registry. However, I think a sped director is probably the third or fourth most important job at the school or maybe it's the, I don't know, the hierarchical, but I've been aware of it and I rethought it last week, I probably wouldn't have put it on, but I want to.
I would say, I think to be consistent with what happened last week, we should delay it till July and then act on it. The only other thought I had, and I have nothing against the individual,
Nope, nope, anyway.
I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if we should have allowed the new superintendent to weigh in where he's coming in with a background in special ed, this is a key appointment. I'm wondering if there's any way he could have also had some, just a thought, so if we delay.
Maybe, maybe, I know he's, I haven't, I've met him like you have, but I, I know he comes around certain days of the week, I think we could do that because we have a meeting next week, I think he's going to attend on the 23rd.
Yeah.
It is Tammy's last meeting, I know earlier in the day, I'm going to accompany John Cronin down there and perhaps we could put something together and that might be a way to do this, I just don't want to, I have to be honest, they did call me about disposition four or five weeks ago, but I don't know the individual and I certainly don't want to discourage them or make them think negatively, I really don't.
No, that wasn't, and that's not my intent.
I know it isn't, well, your point about the new direct, the new superintendent. Talking to this person or weighing in, it was probably a very good point.
Yeah.
And maybe he has, but I don't know that.
I feel comfortable level if he had a chance to.
All right, I don't disagree.
And there's no harm, we wait a few weeks, we're being consistent with last week.
I don't disagree, I, I, I have, but it felt like I had to say. Michelle, I want to speak, Michelle.
John, do you mind if I step in?
Absolutely not.
So I just want to speak to this because as we know, we get the blue sheets, the offer has been, offer has been made, accepted, we need to get paperwork in, we need to onboard them before July 1st. So my recommendation would be, this is, I would, I feel this is an essential position, it's the Director of Special Ed at the school. I wish Rick McPhie would just speak to this, but he's not, I don't know if he's on, on the call, but blue sheets don't come first, they come last, so I just wanted to remind you of that process.
I'm, I'm aware of that, but I, I, I'm not asleep at this week, I, I I have to tell you that I feel, I feel a little bit in the interest of finance based on what happened last week, but I was aware that the sped director was on and we're getting a new one because there may be.
It's Herman, Kristen. Come on in.
Is that John? Oh, okay.
So, on the other appointments, do you want to move on to all the others?
I don't, I don't want to move on yet.
Okay.
Okay, so my motion, okay. The Finance Committee came to us and they asked us through the Finance Chair to put a hold on new hires that were non-assigned. And that was the motion, so essential hires could be hired and temporary seasonal employees could be hired because we need the temporary employees at the golf course and maybe they need them downstairs at the Treasurers Office or the school in the registry, but for the summer, they might need some people, so I didn't want to hold those people up because it's a summer job, they need to, they need to know that it's all going to be done. To say that a sped director is not essential is, is, that's pushing. And I, I know that every job is important and every job is personal, I understand that. But I think you're going to want your sped director up to speed and Michelle, I'm going to go back to you on this one, if, if we were not to sign, if we're not, if we were to vote on this today, does that mean you can't start the paperwork so it can be ready to go on July 1st?
The blue sheet and the PDF form both need to be approved before we start any other process, yes. Those, that's the first step in an onboarding process.
Okay, but if we.
We could wait a week, if you ask them to wait a week, certainly because it's before July 1, but I, I just think if we wait till July 1, we might be waiting too long before we approve this, that's my point.
All right, well, with that being said, I'm fine with pushing this out a week, does that sound okay to you, Dave?
Well, is it, it's, it's, it's a tough thing because I realize how important Director of Special Ed is, of course, you know. The problem in trying to be as consistent, I couldn't get a second on my motion last week for your registrars and he had blue paperwork in as well, I think, I think he did, so, I mean, we can't, he did have the blue paperwork in on that petition. And I know I can't evaluate in terms of where that person would be in the registrar, I can't speak to that, I can't. I would feel more comfortable if he said, honestly, if he's listening, saying this is an important person, but where does that rate in the scheme of things? You know, I'm being honest, I know how important a special ed is person, but my thought honestly was more towards the incoming superintendent. I felt where he's a, his background is, is special ed, you know, it'd be nice to have him wrap his arms around this as well. So perhaps if we delay a week and give him.
If we wait a week, in the meantime, the new, the new superintendent can talk to this person.
Well, we'll seek him out, I'll make sure.
You know, I'm open to that a little bit, but again, like you, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to be consistent. I mean, you know, we're in Fox, so, you know.
I, I do not want to get in a conversation bump, special ed director, obviously, I would take.
Yeah, it's, you know.
Obviously, it's a very key job.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so I'll move that we table this for one week, for this one particular person.
We have a second on that?
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor, table the notice appointment of a special ed director effective July 1st, aye.
Aye.
unanimous, okay, Commissioners, can we have a motion on the retirement of Heidi Black?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor, aye. And the next page is three.
I'd move.
Student workers.
Right, I need the appointment of the contingent appointment, these look like student workers.
Yeah.
Of Michael Rice, Erica Goldowski and Evan McClellan from Wittensville, Canton and Walpole as summer appointments with the effective date 7/5/21, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And move the notice of change of address for Tammy Quinn. Good luck to Tammy again and best wishes, enjoy the Cape effective July 1, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye, that's unanimous, thank you, and I will pay special attention to the sped director. By way of explanation to John, these summer people are not, they're students at the school. Okay, payroll expense warrant for approval. Slowly, yeah, there it is. Commissioner Stady.
Yep, I move the following, Mr. Chairman, warrant 21-50 payroll county in the amount of $135,072.35.
Second.
Motion made and second.
Want me to read them all?
Well, we usually take.
Okay, sure, no problem.
Second, person unanimous.
Okay, yep, all right, second, 21-50 payroll to school, $345,624.83, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one, please.
21-50 parentheses 25.1 payroll to school in the amount of $14,837.18.
Second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one.
Fourth motion, 21-50 parentheses 25.2 payroll to school, $5,020.44, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Next motion, Mr. Chairman, it's payroll, I'm sorry, sales tax for the Walson recreational facility of 61521 in the amount of $3,205.57, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Yeah, next one, almost done, no problem, next expense of the county, June 3, 21, $506,139.65, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
All right, last one, Mr. Chairman, I move 21-12A school expense in the amount of $155,307.34, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye, it is unanimous. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Number 11, bid openings, we have no bid openings?
None.
Okay, number 12, contact awards, animal, fish feed and bedding for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, Nancy?
You have two, these are, you see five quotes from, quotes from two vendors, Gilmore's and Sweet Metal Farm.
And your recommendation is?
They are both to award a contract to each.
Oh, okay.
They're awarded by low price line item.
Okay. So the first, the first one is, after having opened the bids and done their due diligence, it's a quote from Sweet Metal Farm. Sweet Meadow Farm.
Yes.
Fish feed and bedding for one year for Norfolk County Agricultural School, we've done business with these folks before?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to award the contract to Sweet Meadow Farm?
Where's the actual bid, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I see, oh, I see, I'm sorry, I can see it now, yep, no problem, and we have experience with them, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
With both companies.
Sure, I'd move our appointment, the granting of the, the Sweet Metal fee.
Wait a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Second part, also for the agricultural high school.
Move the.
Quote of Gilmore Inc. For some more animal, fish feed and bedding for Norfolk County High School.
He's pretty good.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We're going to sign these now, all three of us, and we'll feed the animals for another year, these people are always reviews them before, I remember.
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's good. It gets. Next item.
These are all signed, these are new.
The next item is going to be Robert from RSVP.
I'm right here, Commissioners, if you can see me.
Yep.
This is summer recognition update from Robert, go ahead, Robert, it's good to see you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, welcome, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Director Cronin. I am wanting to give you an update about our plans in August. This is going to be the second year we are going to forego an annual indoor event due to COVID. So we're taking the idea from some of the senior centers to do a drive-through. What we in our board have decided to do is, basically, you could see, I've included in your packets an invitation letter for our volunteers, but we are going to be offering the choice of two different drive-through gatherings with the opportunity to do social distance visiting under a tent with a box lunch for those individuals who want to join us. The two events are going to be the second and third week of August, August 12th from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Whipple Center in Weymouth. August 19th, 11:30 to 1:30 at the Norfolk Senior Center. The senior centers have generously offered for us to use their outdoor space, they are going to collaborate with us on these events. We are sending out 245 invitations and expect between 160 and 180 volunteers to attend. This includes about 130 volunteers that have been active in the past year plus volunteers that we are hoping are going to be coming back by the fall who've been sidelined due to COVID. We are going to be giving out generous $25 grocery cards and Americor Seniors polo shirt. We are going to have a raffle as well as a box lunch that will pretty much be decided on by our advisory board. I welcome the Commissioners to attend one or both of the events to be able to just say hello to our seniors as they drive by or sit with us. We're really on the road bringing our volunteers back full force from COVID, I know that we have lost some of our 285 volunteers and Chris and I are going to be busy recruiting throughout this year to bring it back to the, the full number. So that's my update and I welcome any of your questions and hope you'll attend.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions, Commissioners, about the summer update from Robert?
Nice job, Robert.
We're, we've been spoiled up until last year when Robert would run a terrific luncheon usually in August at the Lantana and.
Right, this, this is in lieu of that, right?
Right.
The annual luncheon you have, okay, so you have these things here, hopefully go back to that someday or, okay.
Is it safe to say we hope to go back to that, Robert, in the future?
We, we very much plan to go back to that in a year to belatedly celebrate our 30th, the 30th anniversary of Norfolk County RSVP, a couple of years late.
Right, great, sounds like fun and great job, thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
Get back to you, who can attend and all that, but that's wonderful, very good.
Thanks very much, good to see you, all of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay. Number 14, report on the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. I'm going to go to Bill and then I'm going to say something about it, of course, the Commission. I'm gonna go to Bill, and then I'm gonna say something about it. Of course, the commissioner can say anything about it, but it's safe to say we're, we're hoping to accelerate us moving forward.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll speak to them then. Bill?
Mr. Chair, if I could defer to the county director. Been working.
Okay.
Closely with me throughout the, uh, these first three days.
Director Cronin.
Thank you, uh, Bill and Commissioner Shay. So the county of Norfolk, um, uh, being one of the remaining counties in Massachusetts has voiced to receive, um, approximately one hundred and thirty-seven million dollars through the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. Um, through this commission's act, the cities and towns within the county were informed back in late May about the intention of the committee to evaluate the program, the options that the commissioners have to receive the funds or direct the funds, uh, to the cities and towns via the state slash ANF. Um, Mr. Buck is correct. Over the last couple of days, it's been considerable internal dialogue about the pros and cons of, of a program that, um, would benefit the cities and towns, um, as well as the county. And I understand through the May correspondence, the county's expressed an interest in trying to receive, uh, funds from this tranche, uh, to benefit infrastructure according to the American Rescue Plan Act purpose areas. Um, so we spoke with, um, folks from ANF last night and wanted to understand the timing of what's happening. Um, briefly, I, I presume the commissioners understand the, the American Rescue Plan Act has, uh, two different funding streams. Um, there's a funding stream, uh, known as municipal aid, that each county, excuse me, each community within Massachusetts can apply for directly. And then there's the county piece. So in this case, um, we were informed that communities across Massachusetts are actively currently expressing interest in applying for their municipal aid piece. This is separate from the county one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and while that's going on, other counties, including Barnstable, Bristol, and Plymouth, are assessing the, um, uh, program impact of managing the program directly. Um, we spoke with ANF last night to find out a few things. The, the, the program's county management piece is still got a lot of questions associated with, Mr. Chairman. We put forth several of those to, uh, ANF. They've forwarded them to the federal treasury, and they're expecting some answers from the treasury quite soon. But whereas these communities are applying for the funds, they expect to receive the funds shortly, although we don't have a timeframe. Um, it's, it appears imminent that the county piece will follow relatively soon. So it's our hope that the commissioners will understand, um, the dilemma, the choices of accepting the money and distributing it as a organization through the treasurer's office and managing it through the county, um, or the benefit of not doing that and having the state do it. Um, so those are the two pressure point decisions that I think the commission, uh, should consider now, um, that possibly one direction or another. Um, it's my recommendation that the commission, um, not only engage in this discussion, but recognize that we have a little bit of time, um, before the communities, uh, receive their money and certainly before the county solutions or the county questions are answered by ANF. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a few, but I've fed the chair. I'll receive.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Just, uh, if I may, um, so this is getting clearer to me, and it's been great job by Billy in giving us updates every week and trying to refer it. So it's clear now that there's a municipal component and a county component. Let's deal with the municipal component. When you say they apply, let's say Canton or Dedham, Quincy, or Milton, are they applying to us that money or to the federal government directly?
To the state.
To the state, thank you. And we're not responsible for oversight of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I got that call and breakdown, which I was talking about the other night.
And that's via a form of a letter of interest.
Okay, so we're not really focused on that. That's good for the towns, but they're gonna be getting something. They didn't not get anything. They already got something coming.
Right, that's right.
Okay, so the other pool we're looking at is a hundred and thirty-seven million.
Correct.
Which the county has responsibility if accepted to administer and distribute.
That's right.
And we got a breakdown of how much money each town would get, roughly, roughly. But we also have to determine, and we have talked about it, what do we need for our own needs and what do we need in terms of administrative cost? Is there anything on the municipal aid that would go to Norfolk County itself?
Nothing of a worse.
Okay, all right. So the key question would be then, I guess, for us to make a decision in terms of how we administrate, how do we go about setting that up? And then what percent, and we had some people, I think Rick Fitzpatrick and others have been looking at some things that perhaps would be qualified for in terms of broadband improvement and some things like that. They're looking at it. So we have an idea maybe, maybe going forward, but the key thing is in terms of determination on administration, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Which, which I must emphasize, and you, and I'm sure you know this, Commissioner, is the administration would be squarely on the treasurer's office.
On treasurer.
They are the ones that would administer the program.
Has he received any money yet, the first check? Does that come in?
I'm not aware that he has.
Not yet.
I talked to him last.
I was wondering about that. He set up for it. He is typical, this.
He picked his bank, and then that's about it.
Right, he set his bank.
But I did tell him last night that I, I sense an acceleration here of making the decision.
Right, right.
It's based personally on a couple of things. We had a heck of a first quarter here. We're, we're putting some people in place. A premier, which, most prominent, which is John, and we were able to put all of those issues behind us.
Right.
The superintendent of the schools.
Right.
And now.
Right.
This is something we need to update. I did, I did talk to the other counties.
Yeah.
I, I don't like to exempt municipal because they are a county, but their charter is different.
Yeah.
They, they, they handle the water and so on.
Yeah.
And they handle dredging and stuff directly to the county. They're not gonna give the money to the town. They're gonna do it.
Right, right.
And they're advertising, this is interesting, which I didn't find out till today.
Yeah, they, uh.
But the hawk found out.
But I saw it in the paper down the tape.
Okay.
That they, somebody directed administrative.
I read that paper, and I didn't see it.
I caught it. Well, somebody close to me caught it. I shouldn't say.
Okay.
It wasn't me, but somebody close. But they said, look at this. I said, all right. My, my feeling is, I think in summary, in to be brief, um, I feel like I've said before, we should be the ones in charge. This is a great opportunity for our county. You know, puts the county in limelight to do some very good things. I also feel that, we said before, the significant bulk of the money, we want to assure the county, towns, it's gonna go to them. We're getting letters. I saw Wellesley wrote us a letter. We're getting hit from different boards saying, when are we getting our money? They have to be a little patient. But I also feel that we'd be a little bit remiss if we don't look at our own needs and assess that and make, make sure we take care of our own needs. So what better do it than us? Take charge of it and, you know, have the director perhaps weigh in on this now that he's on board? And perhaps set up a oversight committee or working with the treasurer, work with Mike Bellotti in terms of getting real good people, the accounting and all the other things that are needed. And then let's, uh, let's get things in place. That's my feeling.
Okay, well, again, we've carried this for a number of weeks.
Yeah.
Bill did a great job. I just, I, I, I use the word accelerate, and hopefully we can handle it on it before August first, but I say August first, but I hate to use dates, but I, I, I've learned a lot more personally about it and, and that could be change my opinion a little, which I'll be happy to share with you.
Okay, well, thanks for your time.
I don't think it's gonna be next week.
Yeah.
Um, Plymouth. They're working hard now to, to pull it together.
Hmm.
Whereas, uh, they were floating a little, and, and, and same with Bristol seems to be getting down the brass tacks, so.
Are they, Bristol?
They haven't voted yet.
I'm gonna say.
You know. So, uh, I just wanted to bring it up at this time and tell you that, uh, I think it's time to, uh, time on it and.
Yeah.
Try to bring it to an end now that we have, again, made some, some good strides since first quarter. And hopefully it's quieter in the summer, but I can't say that it will be. Commissioner calls.
Yeah, so I was curious, um, so neither Plymouth nor Bristol has pulled the trigger on this yet.
No, but it's close.
Okay, and, um, and we're in communication with them on the other basis?
Quarter one, we were talking, and I was talking, John was, and I was, Bill and I were talking to them at eleven-thirty.
Yeah, that's great.
Being Treasurer O'Brien, and I talked to Chairman Hanley last night on phone radio.
Okay, and, and you were talking to Mike Bellotti last night, so.
Yes.
Okay, um, the next question that I had, because, um, we met with, like, I met with John yesterday. I think you met with John yesterday.
Yes, yeah, great meeting.
And it was, it was a good meeting. And, oh, one of the suggestions that, uh, John had come up with was if we were to take the money and if the other counties were to take the money, if that were to happen, um, um, perhaps the, um, the administration of the funds, um, could be done by another entity, but done by another entity for all three counties combined. Because that was, I thought it was pretty neat. It was a pretty neat idea. So, um, I don't know if you've had the chance to talk to the other counties about that proposal.
No, I haven't, Commissioner. I, I, that idea was floated to you as sort of a, a, a notion. I wouldn't advance to the counties unless this commission thought it was a step worth taking.
I thought it was pretty cool.
It, it speaks to the, the general business sense that when you consolidate your business functions, you get scale, you get savings, and in some cases, you'll get some conformity. But I also recognize after three days on the job that every community's and every county is a little different. So I think that might be one of the things we'd have to work out.
Down, down road.
How, how each county would be independently different, but yet functionally moving the paperwork, making payments, um, and handling the, the, the unique needs of each treasurer. Those are the nuances of a scope that would have to be worked out if it's desired.
Yeah, if we were to choose to take it. Okay. All right, I, I just thought it was interesting, um, outside the box idea because, um, uh, I know Bill's been working on it feverishly, but that was, that was an idea I hadn't, I hadn't heard of, having all the counties join together, maybe to try to administer. That was pretty neat.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so we can, we can talk about this again next week.
Because of saying, I mean, really, you know, wherever you go, the main, 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 main question you're gonna get from the board of, the select board, or what you wanna call it, it's gonna be, when we're gonna get the money and how soon, how much. They wanna know that. And I, basically, we're all saying the same thing. Soon, hang in there, you know.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, uh, add one remark. Um, in our conversations with ANF, it was clear that the funding from the federal government, federal treasury, but the municipal slice of this is funded. The state has the money. It is not clear, and I don't believe it is the case, but the county funds are in the state's hands at this time.
Okay.
Um, so it's, I believe it's imminent. I know it's imminent, but I think the state is still trying to work out some of the answers to those questions that the counties have been pushing up through the state over the last several weeks and months. But when that happens is something that I think will trigger our partner companies to move one way or another. Um, in other words, the communities will receive their money, their tranche, much well before any county monies are distributed, even for those counties that elect to opt-in.
I know, uh, Plymouth, uh, expressed, uh, a desire that, um, hopefully all the counties will be working together in the same direction. You know, that was one of their hopes, but, um, we still have to look out what's, what's best for our county, too.
I, I, I'm somewhat influenced by that argument, but then, um, I, I don't wanna just do it because they did, but I learned today that, um, they were very happy with the people they hired to do the CARES Act. And they continue to use them because it's, only, they haven't spent all the CARES money, but distributed all of it.
I thought the money went back to the state.
No. But he did tell me, and he recommended the firm they used highly to me, and, but he said that he's, he's got a ten-point plan, he being Treasurer O'Brien, that's been presented, that's gonna be presented to commissions this Thursday. And he's going to recommend hiring a separate law firm because he wants a firewall, firewall between, is that the term he used?
Yes.
COVID, uh, CARES money and.
ARP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
ARP, but that would, that would, that would throw out the argument, we all hire the same person, because he said, unless, and I don't know who his new person is, because I haven't hired him yet. Uh, so he, he mentioned that, and he said, we were very fortunate to get the firm we did, and they did a great job, and they're still here, but his ten-point plan, I haven't, we don't have it, but he was pretty, if, if the commissioners don't take all ten of my points, I don't want the money. But he was leaning against taking it. Now he's, he, he's leaning to take it if they implement the ten-point plan called it by me, the O'Brien plan. But he was very funny. He said, if they don't take number eight, it's up. So I don't know. It was pretty good, though. But he's so knowledgeable and, and helpful. And I'm, so I'm gonna fast track John and he getting together, oh, only for, for, for his knowledge and having been through it a little bit, and the other commissioners, too. Um, and I do see Commissioner Hanley quite regularly because our paths cross in other ways, and, uh, I get the impression this week they've gone, they're really moving much faster than they have been.
Okay, um, one item, and I'll, I'll defer to Nancy if, if I get any of this wrong. Um, you may, if you elect to take the funds, and we do need to hire, um, assistants managing the grant through the treasurer's office, et cetera. You may elect to place the services up to bid. It is not required under chapter thirty-three.
Right.
Um, but it would open up the opportunity for competitive pricing and so forth in a market of options that currently this county has not had any experience with. So I just throw that out on the table. When the decision comes, if we move down that road, it's an option for the commissioners to elect to take.
Thank you.
Correct? I, I think at some point we definitely need help if we take it, and I, but I, the only reason I, I bring up the law is that they hired a law firm, and it worked out well, so.
Okay.
This is new, new horizons for everyone, but this is a very important vote. It's big.
But the treasurer is charged with the administration of the funds, correct?
Correct.
So then what's the role of the commissioners? To approve the grants, the applications that come in?
So that's a great question. Um, with little I know, Bill, please feel free to weigh in. The commissioners have a role, first of all, in determining the opt-in or opt-out choice.
Right.
They can also place restrictions on the types of eligible costs that the program.
Right.
Would enable. So for example, if, if the commission wanted to exclude certain expenses, um, right up front, they can apply that to the programmatic goals. Um, so.
Take a moment, give you your explanation. Let me, I'm hypothetical really quick. Let's say a town, a town in Norfolk County. I, I've gone through the tabulation, is entitled, say, the two million. They don't get the two million dollars. They have to apply for, say, water improvements or broadband improvements or those criteria under the federal guideline. We're not just giving each town a check for two million. They have to apply for the work. Is that right?
I don't think that is correct. Uh, unlike CARES, which was a reimbursement program, Commissioner, this is a grant award program.
That's my thought.
Um, so the commissioners will have to make a decision upon award, how much money to distribute.
Mm-hmm.
In it, in, in today, with little we know, the, the one test that could be used is the test of, uh, eligible per capita, uh, test.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily eligible through submitted projects or something like that.
Okay.
Um, using the, the former test, the funds would be released. The towns then would have the opportunity to develop programs, um, and, and, and certain, um, projects to expend against that value. And as they're doing that, they have to report cyclically, usually quarterly, back to the treasurer's office on the progress against that grant.
Okay, that would make sense. A little bit of work there, but, you know.
Doable. Well, we were talking this morning that we're probably looking at hundreds of projects within the county over the next, um, three years.
First, right.
Okay, and one nuance, um, associated with that that I have come to understand is that while the grant ends in twenty-twenty-four, um, the treasury will allow projects which have obligations associated with them to be completed into twenty-twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
So there is a, there is a window there to get these kind of projects done, but the market of activity is something also to keep in mind. Um, we discussed this this morning. A lot of this is public works related.
Hmm.
Um, there's a capacity, you would imagine, for certain types of private sector contractors to perform this work. And because it's a national program, those resources are gonna be optimized. And as the projects move forward, if everybody's doing one type of project, you may start to run into some delays associated with resources that currently we don't see. And so while we think that three to four years of project timeframe is optimal, it might, we might take all of that, Commissioner. It, it could be a rush to try and complete some of these jobs well before the deadline.
Are we limited to granting money to towns only? Could private nonprofit apply?
I owe you an answer to that question you asked me yesterday at lunch. I might, and we'll get that.
Okay, no problem. Because I remember the congressman from Sharon had said to me, uh, Jake, had said, look into, uh, and make contact with the Dedham Watershed, uh, nonprofit trust. They do some great things.
Cube Cap is asking, well, in my case, Quincy's case, it's community, community actions asking the same question.
I wonder if we.
They're willing to deal with.
You know, they, the.
Oh, yeah.
Water at the trough.
We've heard.
Maybe out of our trough, not the towns, but.
We've heard from Quincy's community action.
Okay, so it's just something, I mean, we're not gonna solve it all.
It's a good question. May I ask it? Don't know.
Yeah, we, it's wide open, right?
Whatever.
That's why I thought. But I thought I'd caught that on one of the endless memos we got from Daco, but that, that's good. Okay, so that's, I should reach out, we should.
But, um, again, that's, that's a decision you'd have to make.
Right.
You could say the outside, we're doing towns.
Thank you, Bill.
All right.
Essentially, the commissioners will be calling balls and strikes on a grant.
Yeah.
They're not playing the game.
Baseball's my game.
Um, is it okay with you? Is, Bill, is there anything else that we missed that, that we just talked about?
I think it goes pretty comprehensive.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
I'm just gonna try to ramp it up a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, and as the next subject, too, is just in the same category. Okay.
All right.
Well, this is, well, this.
Yeah.
Number fifteen. For the county director, I'm not gonna put a lot of pressure on John. I think most of his report was given because he's becoming an expert on.
All right, um, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I wanted. No worries. Um, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank you and the other commissioners um, for placing me in this role. I, I deeply appreciate your trust. Um, and I hope to earn more of it over the next several years. Um, my goal uh, within the county is obviously to um, bring my thirty plus years of experience in public management to the benefit of everything you do. Um, I've had the benefit also of meeting with each of you individually over the last several days, um, as well as members of the internal staff. Um, that will continue into next week.
And going up to department heads and everyone. And then we're going to send a letter to every city and town introducing you.
I think it's important to have those stakeholders um, in their interest um, right, you know, right in front of us at all times. There's obviously a lot of work to do. I know it's not on the agenda, but I am looking forward to uh, speaking with, working with and carrying through uh, through your direction, the Abraham's Group's recommendations. I see that as a very important part of the future in Norfolk County. Um, and um, going forward, there'll be obviously instances where I can make recommendations to hopefully um, um, make Norfolk County a very good place to be. So thank you very much for your trust. Um, I really appreciate it. Always here to answer any questions, or at least try to.
It's funny when, when you said um, you wanted to hear from the county director. I looked up to Michelle.
Well, that was my next question, Michelle.
It seems funny to have.
You're already.
Speaking as much.
You already.
I had to be quiet.
As I was saying, we're doing, these two comedians at the meetings in the past, but. Welcome aboard, John. We're looking forward.
Thank you. Do you have any, any parting words as the acting county director, not as the personal supervisor, the way we know?
I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. I've learned a lot in every short period of time, so I appreciate it.
You're still talking to us.
I'm still talking to you.
There were times I thought.
I still like you.
I didn't think that Michelle would be talking to me anymore. It's good. All right.
I'd like to compliment her as well. She's been great transitioning.
Everything's good here.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, well, Bill did a terrific job too. He really did.
It was great, yep.
Number sixteen. Topics that you had not really anticipated would be discussed. I had two. The first one you just alluded to was very quick. Commissioners, last week we forwarded a draft copy of the fiscal policies portion of the Abraham's Group. I want you to uh, uh, embrace it and we're going to put it on next week's agenda for discussion, preliminary discussion.
I haven't finished.
I think one week was enough.
Yeah, I need a little more time.
I don't, and I don't want to hold up the Abraham's Group going forward and, and uh, when I point to, but it was lengthy. Uh, I gave you everything I had, and Michelle gave it to you and uh.
Yeah.
So Chairman, just for a point.
It's, 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 it's an important issue. The second and last item I have is. Go ahead, John. I'm sorry, Michelle, I can't see it.
I just want to remind you, the Abraham's Group will be on the agenda next week to discuss it.
That's, okay, they're gonna, okay, they'll be here too. So I want to give another look out at that, if you could, in the next week. Um. The option on the remote meetings, which went right up to noon today. Um, in your packet, we enclosed a couple of legal surveys for your use in deciding what to do. But since the governor, I'm told, has extended the Zoom portion of meetings till April of twenty two, it's still available. I want to know what your thoughts are because Monday we have to post again. Do you want to go back to Zoom? Do you want to do both? Do you want to just meet a person? I think we need to discuss it as a group. And I have to do it as an agenda item. I have, I, I mean, I, I like the live meeting, but.
May I, may I, would your permission go first? I had thought about this, and again, take this the right way. This has been an exciting six months and a very challenging one, and every morning. But again, coming from a little bit of my background as a former select board meeting member and also town official, in some towns, they have what's called summer schedule where the boys don't meet on a weekly basis. They cut it back a little bit.
I've heard you say that.
Let me, this, this is a thought I had was, I enjoyed this in-person meeting today. I really did. This was great. But I also see an advantage in Zoom as well. I'm wondering if we might be able to combine and utilize both in the event if we reduce our schedule or in the event in summer, if some of us are perhaps not in the area where we get a tender meeting, we could still participate remote via Zoom. I'm not going to have it too often, but I mean, as I know, it's a couple of times I'll be with my family and.
I understand.
So, you know, um, that's my little thought. And Peter, no, you know, that problem now is probably because your school's out, right? Before you had a, no, no, there was, no, 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 there was an issue where if someone had to leave a meeting or you said something comes up, having the remotability is a good thing if you can, but um, I don't know if that's something you want to debate or, or talk about or whatever, but.
I, I think there's merit to Zoom. Um, I personally like being in person. I, I think it's just um, it's just easier to get a feel for what's going on. Um, but I, I think the Zoom option is a nice option.
I was at the meeting last night with Norfolk, a, a member of the advisory board needed a little, let's see, we'll say, asked me to come in and talk about what was going on. Long story short, they did both. So they had the Zoom and the live, and it went pretty well. It went well. It wasn't any kind of glitch at all, but the point was they had the option of both. So if we can do both, um, it would be great. I mean, we could continue.
Can we do both? I mean, this is, we can, based on.
The, the issue that the governors order brings in, which we've all enjoyed for the last year or so, is the participation element of folks through the Zoom window. Um, I think what the chairman is asking is if you folks plan to come in here every week or would you like to join by Zoom to enable the quorum to function as a, as a, as a commission? Um, you have that option.
Right. And I read the infogram and you know that you presented material and, you know, if it's un, let's just say unreasonable for a member to attend or something like that, you know, have you, some towns allow that. They allow the members Skype in.
Quincy did if they.
The person can't make it, they Skype in or Facebook.
You had to hear substantially all the presentation, but you could come in and review the tapes. Quincy allowed that long before Covid.
Right.
And then the councilman, as clerk of council, I prepared an affidavit and councillor X Y Z would say, I listened to all the tapes of the of occurring on building a twenty story building. I was out of this country, but I came back and, and they took that.
Yeah.
And I'm not advocating that here, but that, that, so it's, this, this, those other options have been available for a while. This, the Covid forced the Zoom to become, you know, very prominent. I mean, it's the only way we did it. And the phone option too, which I did not enjoy. I thought the Zoom was better than the phone option. And then the first few months were a little, we got it down perfect now, perfect now, but it was glitzy and it was a little, little tough in the beginning.
Well, so if you have two presidents, you can conduct the meeting.
Of course.
Yes.
Court.
Yeah. And the way that memo was written, if you have two, you can have a meeting, and then you can provide the option for the third member or the other member to participate via Zoom or whatever meeting you choose. And I think essentially that's all I'm saying. If it comes up that.
We also have the option on the general laws, if only one member is here and something goes wrong.
That's right.
We have the ability to bring a Norfolk County resident and generally it's a selectman or, it used to be Frank Haggerty.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in one, perhaps the third meeting Bill ever came to, when he was assistant director, he, we, we were down to one.
Phil told me that.
We had to, he had to be coming in. I mean, there is a section of law that allows for acting commissioners too. I've only, I've only been present when we did it twice.
Yeah.
And uh, so we, we're covered. There's not a reason um, that we wouldn't probably have a meeting always.
Yeah.
And uh, in the case of Mike Mullin and John, they weren't county residents, but we have Bill.
I'm not going on an African safari, so I'm thinking this a little bit, but I know that there's usually in the summers, a couple of times that I'm with the family, so, you know.
Okay, well, we need to determine today what we're going to do because next week is uh, got to be published on Monday. And uh, I like the personal, the in-present meeting, but I think it Zooms got another life that we like.
I wonder if we leave it uh, the way it is, but we have the option always to go Zoom. That, that bill gives us the right to do that at any time. Am I right?
Is that a motion?
Or not?
Yes.
Is that incorrect?
Uh, if the director has something to put around, he's back to me some, but I don't want to.
Go right ahead, Bill.
Um, through you. So the, what the bill says is uh, you, we can continue a status quo.
Okay.
And I, I just want to kind of distinguish between a remote participation option requires a, a quorum of the members to be present here for someone to participate remotely, whereas with, with the extension of the governor's order, uh, Joe Shea could be here as he has been every week, kind of doing the Zoom meeting, and, and you could be on Zoom all the time and you would constitute the quorum if, say, Peter was.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, all right.
So I think that's, that's the distinction.
So halfway through, I decided to come in here and do my meetings because as chair and all the things that could be done, but I, I used to be at home, but.
So if something came up, even a member couldn't make it, you can just use a Zoom making.
And that council's being present without the need for a, a, a remote participation sort of um, policy of the board.
Oh.
So, so basically, what, what we've done all along is continue, continues to be permissible. So you could, you, next week you could be a candidate and you consume it. And you would, you would be part of a quorum and counter towards that.
Oh.
So again, the, the option, right, I think, as I said earlier, the, the decision before the commission is whether or not you want to, want to continue in-person meetings at a convenience or use the Zoom to remotely add your quorum going forward, as Bill indicated you've been previously doing. Do you intend to be in person? Or do you intend to utilize the tool that you have from the last year to remote in?
And we are doing a dual meeting right now, you know, people at home.
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the Zoom. I think it's been a great tool for us to use in terms of participation and even getting feedback, so I feel leaving it well enough alone, but come in here next week, that's fine. You know, that's, that's what you're saying.
But to have the option to participate via Zoom is something you'd like to leave open.
Yeah.
Two here, one there, or a guy first.
Yeah, I'd be for that, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, generally, I'm always going to be here as long as I'm chairman. I mean, I.
Okay, this one is good.
Zoom too.
Okay, good. No, good. So every week we'll get a Zoom option sent.
Right, so through you, Mr. Chair, just to, to clarify, we will always offer a Zoom option.
Okay.
But the public can come in, sit here as well.
Yep.
Um, and, but the public will, until April, be able to zoom in and participate.
Oh, yeah, the other question. Do we have any safeguards for us as far as the public coming in if they don't have the vaccine? Are we requiring proof of that or?
Correct. Uh, could I yield to Michelle? We had this conversation last night. Michelle posted something, so if you want to let folks know what the access um, director is.
There's a, there's a, a sign on the door when you come in downstairs as well as a sign on our door when you come upstairs.
Yep.
Um, regarding the mask requirement for vaccinated and non-vaccinated people.
Would you put that in the elevator too, please?
Okay.
I will.
Take the elevator.
Okay.
So it's advising individuals who are not vaccinated, they ought to consider masking up.
Great.
To protect them.
Right, protect, good, good.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Time's running.
Yeah. Yeah. That's great.
Monday will be sooner than Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
We want to make sure everyone is aware.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't want to disconnect, but we had to go forward today because we didn't know it anyway, so.
Great.
But we got, we got both up anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are also utilizing this to record our meetings, which will continue.
Okay.
Correct. Good.
Hi, anyone else have anything else under item number sixteen?
If I may, one quick question. Just uh, do we have an idea when we might be getting counsel in on the matter of the solar uh, litigation? Do we have that scheduled? Is he coming in soon to discuss the rest of those issues?
There was a meeting this week about choosing.
That is, that's a meeting of the executive committee, which is tomorrow, which is completely separate.
That's different, yeah.
Yeah.
Council Lopez is in the Holy Land, I believe for the next ten days, but the, the legal uh, matter has been moved off until a month from now.
Okay, that's.
So that's.
Um, are you up to speed on that? Did you get those correspondence we talked about?
No.
You need to get those, yeah.
Yes.
The letter of denial from the local department on buildings and officer. Get those things, okay.
I'll make sure that he's.
You have to speak on that.
When was that?
Because I was zoning expert.
Yeah, yeah, I'm the zoning guy. No, all right, so Scotty's not around for a while.
I didn't, I just found out yesterday he was traveling.
I had June twenty third now, so maybe I'll.
Okay.
And we have Aggie next week?
Yes.
Yes.
Regular monthly meeting and then uh, if you saw a note.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I did see that, yeah, very good.
On Tammy, that's, I hope to catch up to the new director on that other end.
Good.
And then John and I are going there next week too.
If, um, so maybe we can reach out to Tammy today to tell her what we talked about with the spec director.
Yeah.
And uh, maybe get the new superintendent.
Yes.
On, on board to see if.
All right, I'll take care of that today.
During the week.
I'll be tomorrow morning. I'll, I'll call today.
Okay, well, um, Michelle can do it if you want. H R, you want to do that or?
You want to do the show?
Yeah, I want to do it because I have another item I got to discuss.
Right, okay. So the chair.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll try.
Okay, last call. A little motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Now we'll send you all down the street.
Mark, you can stop.
The heat exchanger, whatever it is. We'll get to.